Madam Clerk, I call this meeting to order. Can you do the roll call?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our first item of business, we have a proclamation. Constitution Week is this week, and Francis, let me make sure, it's the 17th, I apologize, next week, 17 through the 23rd, so Francis McGee Cromarty, come to the podium.
Yes, and this is another member, we have a third member, come on up to you. This is Stephanie McKinsey, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And we appreciate you giving us this proclamation. We are part of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and we are lineal descendants of men and women who served the American cause during the American Revolution. I am the descendant of a forgotten patriot, that is, one of the 9,000 men and women of African and/or American Indian descent. Our precepts are patriotism, education, and historic preservation, and we do a lot to support our communities. One of the ways that we like to support our community is to promote Constitution Week. Constitution Week begins the 17th of September, it ends the 23rd. We ask everybody to look at it as a milestone year, I think it's the 235th year that we have, and we ask everyone to at least read the preamble to the Constitution. It is very important that we, as citizens, know all of the rights that we have and only four responsibilities. Those four responsibilities are to participate in the census, to serve if you are asked to represent your country in service, armed service, and those are two of the precepts that were, or rights that were given to people who did not own land. Landowners were asked at the time that the Constitution began to, you were allowed to vote, and you were allowed to serve on juries. Now, because the country has changed, it has expanded, and everybody has these rights, and we encourage everybody to fulfill all of those rights and, oh, excuse me, all of those responsibilities of citizenship. But look at all of the rights that we have as citizens. So we ask to have, see if you could give us a proclamation to remind all of the citizens of Montgomery County that we are free Americans, these are our rights, these are our responsibilities, and these ideals are what make America great. Thank you.
Well, it is certainly our pleasure to make such a proclamation, so I will go ahead and read it. Be it known that the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, proclaim that September 17th, 2022, marks the 235th, just like you said, anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County, Ohio, do proclaim September 17 through the 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week, and we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that a lost right may never be regained. Signed by myself, Carolyn Rice, President of the Commission, and my fellow Commissioners, Judy Dodge and Deputy Lieberman. So, that's all.
Thank you.
And we would like to take a picture, we'll come down here. Yes. and I will lend the floor to Katie Schreiber.
Good afternoon, everybody, Commissioners, county leaders, and our guests. My name is Katie Schreiber, and I am an animal care provider at the Montgomery County Animal Resource Center, and I just wanted to share some information with you, everyone here, about our programs, events, and our initiatives since the last time we've come to share some information. I'm aware it's been a while since we've been here. In terms of basic data, just from the beginning of the year until today, we have had 1,064 intakes of dogs. We've transferred 46 dogs to rescues or partner agencies. We have returned an astounding number of 244 dogs back to their families, and we've completed 606 adoptions, 84 alone were just done in August, which was our Clear the Shelter month. With Clear the Shelter, we had two generous donations from Dyer Garofalo, Mann &amp; Schultz, along with Starco Incorporated, to help offset licensing fees for 37 of those dogs that went home. As of this morning, we currently have 25 dogs up for adoption, they're all looking for their homes. On the community side, we've had lots of events from March through May in partnership with Pet Co. Love. We vaccinated 300 dogs with the DA2PP vaccines, which is a vaccine for distemper and parvo, to help keep everyone's pets safe from parasites and disease, very important vaccine. We were all really excited that we could share that with the community. We attended the Wright-Patterson Air Force Base Adoption Event in Vandelia Touch a Truck on May 14th. We participated in Law Enforcement's National Night Out Events in Huber Heights and Trotwood on August 2nd. We were part of the Holiday at Home Parade in Kettering on September 5th, and we did a second Touch a Truck event in Vandelia on September 10th. And if anyone is interested, we'll be involved in the annual Wilmore Hale Adoption Event coming up this month, September 24th. And so if anyone's looking for a doggie, you know where to find us. And then in terms of things that's been happening at the shelter, since I'm the animal care provider, I interact with almost every single dog that's at the shelter every day that I work. Something that I was really excited to participate in was the ride-along with an animal care and control officer. So every employee at the ARC has the opportunity and privilege to ride along with an officer and see them work out in the community. So not only do we understand what it's like to serve our people at the shelter, we also get to understand what it's like to go out and find people who need help, dogs who need help, everything like that, we get to understand what it's like to actually go out there and make connections. I also wanted to mention another program that we've started at the ARC. It's called the Lunch Buddy Program, where I've asked that anyone who's interested in getting a dog out during the lunch break or any kind of break, they can get a dog out with them, and it gets them some time out of their kennels. And Director Bob G. was our first participant. He took one of our long-term residents on a nice long walk around the building, and it's just very valuable for them to be able to come out of their kennels throughout the day and release some, you know, physical and mental pent-up energy. So thank you very much for participating with that, and it kind of ties in with another little project, I say little, but it's been really big, our TikTok account to connect even more with the community and show them what's been going on in the shelter and what kind of services we provide, and to show off all the really cute dogs. But anyway, the Lunch Buddy Program helps to get more videos, and we can better describe the animals when we hang out with them more. So I'll just play our first TikTok video.
We are Montgomery County Animal Resource Center, and we are excited to be here. Here's what you need to know about us. We are located at 6,790 Webster Street. We have an amazing staff ready to help you find your perfect dog. Our mission: to serve the community and pets in Montgomery County through effective public safety, human animal welfare, and connecting pets to forever homes. Our adoption fee is $20. We also provide resources to take care of your new family member. Can't adopt? No problem. People can volunteer, foster, become a rescue partner, or donate. We are Montgomery County Animal Resource Center, and we-
And it just repeats. But as you can see, we've got a lot of stuff going on at the ARC, and all really great stuff. So that was the TikTok. Just one more thing I wanted to mention about the ACOs. They've also been working really hard with local U.S. Postal Service locations in Montgomery County. They're working on more ways to keep them safe and how to better communicate if any of their employees are feeling uncomfortable about certain situations with dogs in the community. They've just been making really great progress on having seamless communication with them. So, very proud of them. And then just one last thing, we just want to have a reminder for everyone that dog license sales begin on December 1st and go through the end of January 2023. So, everyone buy a dog license.
Yep.
And that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Katie, a couple questions.
Yes.
You said how many dogs we have available right now, but how many is it, 30, what?
25 dogs.
Oh, 25 available for adoption, okay.
95 in the shelter.
95 in the shelter, so some of them will be coming available for adoption soon, okay. And then if people want to see the dogs that we have available, where do they go?
mcanimals.org is our website. You can look at all 25 currently available dogs on, there should be a tab on the very front page that says Adopt, you can go there and look at all of them. But we also like to tell people to take a look at our Lost and Found side, just because that's where you can see a lot of the unavailable dogs, but they might be made available soon, and you never know, you might see your neighbor's dog on there, so, yes.
Right. Thanks for all the work you're doing, it's wonderful, the TikToks are cute.
Yes.
Yeah, very nice. Next time, now you gotta bring up, yeah, we want to bring a dog in to show everybody how cute they are.
We have a parvo exposure quarantine protocol.
Okay, there you go. We didn't want him coming out then. Good. Well, and I could say that one statistic that I really liked was the 260 that you found them back to their real homes.
Yes.
That is amazing for those dogs, as well as their families, but that's, you know, that's the ultimate, is that we get them back where they belong. So that's wonderful. And I'm just guessing that the three of us will probably come by for a lunch, I'm going to work that into my schedule, Carrie, because I love, you know, getting out and seeing the wonderful work that we do, so, and thank you for just your perspective, you did great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You did great, thank you.
Thank you, have a great evening.
All right, you too. Next time, bring up, bring up a pup if there, okay.
I know.
Okay. Steve, it's always good to see you.
Yeah.
It's always good to see Steve. We know you would, too, but Steve has for years, years, years been volunteering, he was in the auditoriums forever, and we're just so happy that you're still out there at the ARC.
Yep.
What do you mean?
I know.
Nope, you're not leaving.
What'd you say?
He did eat the biscuit.
What flavor was it?
All right, well, thanks, you guys.
Thank you very much. All right. Not quite as exciting as the hearing about the dog. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I don't know. I mean, I see salt on here. County engineer.
I know, I can't compete with dogs. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have three resolutions for your approval today. The first is Resolution 22-1382, to authorize a price agreement with American Rock Salt Company, LLC, for road salt through July 31st of 2023, with an option to renew. 1383 is to amend the agreement with Eagle Bridge Company for the Sellers Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project in the city of Moraine by adding $66,707.33 to the original amount for a revised total of $830,966.88. And 1384 is to authorize the purchase and acquisition of real property and easements necessary for the Shute Mill Road Reconstruction Project in Harrison Township.
Move to approve. Okay, before we approve it, I just have to say this. We're starting with salt, and this is September, I can't believe it.
I guess that price agreement.
We have to, we have to fill out.
I know.
And it's more expensive this year, of course.
It is.
Yeah. Thirty percent more, probably.
Oh, wow. That's more than a question. Okay. I think I seconded it. Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Juvenile court.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you, everyone. We have two items for your consideration today. Item 1365, which is Nationwide Children's Hospital doing business as the Abigail Wexner Research Institute, to collect, enter, analyze, and report data for the Family Treatment Diversion Program in an amount not to exceed $8,500 through September 30th, 2023. And Resolution 1386, which is the K-12 Gallery for young people to provide court-involved youth exposure to art history and different mediums of art in an amount not to exceed $17,000 through June 30th, 2023.
I move for approval. Second. And I'm gonna do what you did, Judy. I just want to say that the K-12 Gallery partnership has always been really great for our juvenile youth, the things that they get them out doing.
Really great things with the murals and-
Yeah. The murals have been great, and just the whole fact that art is such a healing way to address some of the issues that those youth might have and find a better outcome. Thank you. Thank you. So are you moving? I moved. She seconded. Oh, I didn't hear that part. Okay. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Treasurers' office.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the county treasurer, we have Resolution 1387, authorizing an agreement with U.S. Bank to provide banking services through August 31st, 2024, with options to renew. We also have Resolution 1388, accept the investment reports for May, June, and July, 2022.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County administrator.
Under the county administrator, under the clerk's office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on August 30th, 2022. Resolution 1389, approval of bills, and Resolution 1390, approval of travel and expenses. Both those lists are available in the clerk's office.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Administrative services.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have several resolutions for your consideration today. The first is 1391, the Approval of Personnel Actions. This list is available in the clerk's office. 1392, this authorizes an agreement with APG Office Furnishings Incorporated for the purchase of furnishings and installation services for the municipal court's Trotwood Furnishings Project in an amount not to exceed $277,223.41 through August 31st of 2023. 1393 amends the Letter of Understanding with the Department of Job and Family Services for the rental of $78,643 square feet of office space located at the Job Center by extending the term through May 31st, 2023, with an automatic renewable one-year term. 1394 extend the price agreement with Bueller Blacktop for street opening repairs for the Environmental Services Department through September 30th of 2023. 1395 rejects the proposal for a license plate reader database coordinator for the Office of Risk, Safety, and Emergency Management and re-advertise. 1396 request proposals for janitorial services for the Facilities Management Department. The next two authorized service agreements, 1397, Rumkey of Ohio Incorporated for special waste hauling services for the Environmental Services Department through September 30th of 2024 with options to extend, and 1398, Duke's Root Control Incorporated for the 2022 Sanitary Sewer Root Control Services Project for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $457,268.13 through October, or, I'm sorry, through December 31st of 2022. And the final two are to authorize intergovernmental agreements to transfer ownership of equipment purchased with FY18 Homeland Security, or State Homeland Security Program, SHSP Grant Funds. 1399 is for Champaign County Emergency Management Agency, and 1400, Clark County Emergency Management Agency.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Environmental services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 1401, authorizing an agreement with Buildings Crafts Incorporated for construction of the Eastern Regional Water Reclamation Facility Belt Filter Press Replacement Project at their lowest and best bid of $8,590,000 through December 31st, 2024. 1402 amend the agreement with CG Construction and Utilities Incorporated for the Lynnhaven and Meyer Water Main Replacement Project by adding $45,103.56 to the original amount for a revised total of $2,445,003.56, and extending the term through December 30th, 2022. 1403 accept the Surety and Subdividers Contract from Redwood Miami'sburg North Springboro Pike OHP1 LLC for the Redwood Miami'sburg Development in an amount of $1,65,569.20. 1404 accept the Subdividers Contract from 3233 Woodman Associates Limited for the Lofts and Senior Village at Kettering Town Center Development. 1405 accept the sewer lines to serve the Erosion Control Phase 2 Wolf Creek Relief Sewer Replacement Project. 1406 accept the water mains to serve the Woodland Hills Water Main Replacement Project Phase 4. The following two are to accept the easement deeds in connection with the development of the Lofts and Senior Village at Kettering Town Center and record the same. 1407 is the water lines through property belonging to 3233 Woodman Associates Limited. The last one is 1408, sanitary sewer lines through property belonging to 3233 Woodman Associates Limited.
Commissioners, before you approve, Matt, can you give the Commissioners an overview of one of our larger projects, 1401?
Yeah, this is the Belt Filter Press Replacement. The Belt Filter Press is a process of de-watering the solids that are in our wastewater stream before we dispose of the solids. The last major upgrades and improvements at Eastern Regional was back in 1988, and the folks that have been here a while tell me that the current Belt Filter Press was repurposed from another place in the plant, so it predates 1988. As you may guess, the process is a very smelly process, and it's in our main operations building. So the HVAC is extremely important for this project. While the HVAC is original to the building, which was built in 1988, so included in this project is replacement of that HVAC system in the main operations building. Got to give a shout-out to our operations and maintenance staff, they do an amazing job keeping these assets running and getting the most life out of this equipment, so they do a great job, however, the parts are harder and harder to come by, so it's a right time to do this project.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, thank you. That's interesting. I don't really want to go there and smell it now, but I'm sure it will be much better.
Yes.
That's great. I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Human services.
Okay, we have before ye Resolution 1409, authorize a delegation of activities agreement with St. Vincent de Paul for the Apple Street Emergency Shelter for Women and Families Capital Improvements Project utilizing Ohio Department of Development Target of Opportunity CDBGCV funds in an amount not to exceed $3,200,200 through October 31st of 2023. Also, Resolution 1410 amend the agreement with Preschool Promise, Inc., to modify the articles and scope of work for the Preschool Promise Program in a total amount not to exceed $16,120,000 through December 31st of 2023. Then we also have Resolution 1411, accept a grant for the local youth advisory board in an amount of $7,500 through June 30th of 2023, and then amend agreements by modifying various articles through December 31st of 2022. Resolution 1412 with Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley to provide comprehensive case management and employment program, CCMEP services, to eligible residents with no change in funding. Resolution 1413 is Propio LLC for interpreting services to eligible residents by increasing the original amount by $10,000. And then we have two agreements, terminate agreements effective September 30th of 2022. Resolution 1414, the Legal Process Servers Express LLC, and then 1415, Prime 2 Holdings LLC DBA Furniture Express.
Jerry, can you talk a little bit about Resolution 1409 around our shelters? And Commissioners, the work we do around homelessness is, this is a pretty great partnership.
Yeah, so Resolution 1409 with St. Vincent de Paul Center is really to respond to the current pandemic and the preparation for future health emergencies as well, so we're remodeling the bathrooms, space off-site recreation to have the space necessary to keep people safe. Also, there's a generator installation that also has to be done there at the shelter, and then other external improvements. So it's really around keeping people safe out there at the homeless shelter.
Great, great, thank you. Okay, move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And business services.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Business Services, I have two resolutions for you, two late items. First one is 1416, authorizing a purchase agreement with Sedgwick Technology Solutions for ServiceNow, license renewals for the BCCIT department, amount not to exceed $66,700.
exceed sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Under community economic development, I have fourteen seventeen, authorizing the issuance and sale of economic development facilities, revenue bond series twenty-twenty-two Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley Project in a principal amount not to exceed seven million dollars, executing various loan documents in connection with the issuance of the bonds. And the two late items under workforce are fourteen twenty-four, authorizing agreements, Black Brothers, Black Sisters involvement to provide mentoring services to eligible residents in amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars through July first, twenty twenty-three, and fourteen twenty-five, Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio Doing Business as Miami Valley Urban League to provide in-school and out-of-school employment training services in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And under county commissioners, we have a resolution fourteen eighteen to appoint Elizabeth Redman to the Developmental Disability Services Board, filling an unexpired term through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Fourteen nineteen to appoint Vanessa Ward to serve on the Sinclair Community College Board, Warren and Montgomery County Community College District, to fill an unexpired term expiring September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Fourteen twenty appoints Jessica Jenkins to the Ohio Children's Trust Fund, Western Ohio Child Abuse and Neglect Regional Prevention Council through August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Fourteen twenty-one reappoints Michelle Niedermeier to the Ohio Children's Trust Fund, Western Ohio Child Abuse and Neglect Regional Prevention Council through August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Fourteen twenty-two reappoints Dr. Dave Collins and Chris Williams to the Workforce Investment Board for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Fourteen twenty-three reappoints Thomas Weckaser to the Greater Dayton Regional Transit Authority Board of Trustees for a three-year term ending September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now we have a hearing on the Flood Damage Prevention Regulation Amendments.
Thank you, good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Larry Weisman with Community and Economic Development. Eddie, I'll go ahead and be somewhere now. Thank you, I'm sorry.
You're welcome. Mr. Weisman, would you raise your right hand? Any other person wishing to give testimony in this hearing, you would likewise. Sir, do you swear upon the testimony about you ever being the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Thank you, sorry for that little breach in protocol. Well, I'm here to advise that the staff is recommending adoption of this resolution, which will allow the revision of the county flood damage prevention regulations to occur so that we can maintain our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. We've received some advice from Ohio Department of Natural Resources, who has obtained their approval for model legislation that they're advising us to adopt so that we can maintain participation. So FEMA, which is a Federal Emergency Management Agency, is directing local communities to adopt the language that you see before you in order to maintain their participation in the flood insurance program. We've reviewed it, and ODNR has been working with our building regulation staff for a while on this. We have not received any comments to this point from the public. This is necessary for us to maintain participation in the flood insurance program. It does not change any of the standards that relate to actual construction in these flood districts, and the language and overall adoption of the resolution would reflect and implement the best practices and best information that FEMA has regarding regulating construction in the floodplains. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. There being no questions, the hearing is closed.
Thank you, Larry.
Next, we have comments by citizens, and we do have David Smith. Will you come up to the podium with your name and address? And you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name's David Smith. Soldiers Home West Carrollton Road, eighteen forty, and I'm here representing about sixteen residents. Four of them in this one issue of well testing that was in the Dayton Daily News Thursday, the eighth of September. Residents along Frederick Pike are having their water tested for PFOS. Well, we have the Gettysburg landfill and Steve Rousch landfill, and both of them are leaking, and there are four residents who, three who use the water for drinking, bathing, and so on, cooking. And then the other three basically use it, one uses their water for filling a swimming pool and watering plant, that could be garden plant, and they would like to know if their wells could be also tested for free because the well seepage at the Steve Rousch landfill is, is located on two springs, and the EPA does not know how deep the springs are. These wells that residents have are about eighty feet deep, and they're at various levels. If you're familiar with Soldiers Home West Carrollton Road, it goes up and downhill. And let's see here, the other issue was the road conditions in the thirteen-hundred block to the fifteen-hundred block of Soldiers Home West Carrollton Road. The dirt from the Rousch company has been mounted up on the sides of the road so high the water no longer drains. It's like a curb, like curbing. So when it rains, the water just lays there. In the wintertime, it's a hazard because of ice, and throughout the year, cars are constantly getting sprayed with mud and dirt. There's dust in the air from the grinding of concrete. It needs to be addressed. Maybe some water could be sprayed on the concrete when it's dumped and sprayed, or ground. The edge of the road is deteriorating. There's debris in the road. The residents have complaints about high grass and debris in their yards coming from their trucks that go in and out of that location. Any of you have any questions?
Sir, if you could wait afterwards, I'm going to have Matt meet with you.
Sure.
I'd like to get the exact addresses on the, on the water issues you have.
I have them here.
Okay, to make, to, to make sure that, that's, that's within our, our water area.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What you saw in the article in the paper is within Montgomery County's water area. We have designated areas. So Matt will be able to look at those addresses, and he'll get back with you.
Okay.
Okay. Matt is right there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question for you, Mr. Smith. We received this letter, too, that you brought us.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I brought that up with the Ms. Brackler.
Yeah, yeah. Have you addressed these concerns with Mr. Rousch?
He is not very receptive. He threw one of our residents out of his office, who came there to inquire about purchasing topsoil. That's what the resident told me. He stepped, he stood in the office, he didn't see anyone, so he just stood there and waited. And then Mr. Rousch came out, he can read lips, so he understood what he was told.
Just some of the things that are in this letter, I think maybe if there's some type of mediation perhaps might be the answer.
I think so. The attorney sent that to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we've heard nothing back from the county.
Well, we'll, we can definitely tell you whether or not we can test that water. And, and even if, even if we can't provide it for free, we can have the wa, you can get the water tested.
Okay, also, I've been referred to a company in Clayton or Englewood that tests the water, but they only test for things like E. coli. They don't test for things that'll be found in landfills.
I think a couple of things here. One, we need to see the letter, which I haven't seen.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry that I just dropped it off, it should come to you.
Here, I got it right here.
Thank you, that's okay.
Yeah, I got it.
And the other thing is, we need to digest these issues and make sure that we're addressing each of the problems individually.
Sure.
So give us a little bit of time.
Okay.
And we'll make sure we get back with you.
Thanks for bringing the chart in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
And there are no other citizen comments? So comments by our county administrator, Michael Clover.
Thank you, commissioners, thank you very much. Well, I wanted you to know, commissioners, that Montgomery County has several positions open. We are an employer, and we are one of the largest employers in the community, and we are also hiring. So our Stillwater Center needs to have providers. The Job and Family Services is looking for caseworkers, child welfare caseworkers, as well as Child Support and Family Assistance Program. Matt, our own Matt Hilliard, Water Sewer. Matt just talked about sewer today, and why it might not smell very good. We have thousands of miles of water in sewer, and we need workers to support that. Bob was here talking, and, and Katie, our Animal Resource Center. So we need employees across the county, and we are looking to hire. So Montgomery County is a wonderful place to work, and we believe in diversity and inclusion. We have competitive pay, excellent benefits, twelve paid holidays, and a excellent retirement program. So please consider checking out our opportunities at mcohio.org. Again, that's mcohio.org if you are looking for an opportunity to work with Montgomery County. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Michael. We do have quite a few jobs open.
We do.
Of course, this is something, I think our region right now has thirty thousand jobs open, but we know what a half provider is, but some of these, if you go online, you can find the detail of, of what each position is, but just give us a little bit of what a half provider is.
Half providers support our individuals at Stillwater. Stillwater is our acute care center, so it's a center where it's, it's really kind of part nursing home, part hospital. We, we take care of our residents year-round, and a half provider essentially moves our residents that live there and supports their needs, whether it's feeding, or whether it's movement of them physically. And they support our LPNs and RNs that work in Stillwater facility. So we are fortunate, thanks to our commissioners, that we are one of the few counties that have a, an intermediate care facility like Stillwater where we can take care of our most challenged citizens. We have about ninety-eight residents, Commissioner, in, in Stillwater, and our half providers provide a lot of that acute care support, so thank you.
So it's the day-to-day care.
Absolutely.
And so these jobs, we have anywhere from entry level all the way up to, you know, very skilled, so, yes, please look.
Yep, absolutely, and I really enjoy, now that COVID is, it's not behind us, but it's, at least, we're approaching more normal. We're able to onboard our new hires each month, and honestly, it's, it's quite a diverse group of skills, ages, everything you can imagine, so please, please, please do look at, because it's like, we are like a village, with lots of different businesses, all public service, but very different skills and experience needed, so please think of us. It'd be great.
Our county engineer's here, he needs probably truck drivers, or, or.
We do, we do, we do need a few more truck drivers and a mechanic, and a traffic engineer.
Excellent.
We, we didn't mention our, our legal team. You don't get to direct traffic.
They're always looking for more prosecutors.
Well, switching gears a little bit, if anybody has any old tires, I know, that's, I didn't expect that switch, did you? That are taking up space in your garage, please remember that this coming Sunday, September eighteenth, is our annual tire buyback event from nine AM to one PM at the Solid Waste District, one thousand one M Crete Lane in Moraine. You know, right as you're approaching seventy-five, you can't miss it right there, and I'm telling you, you've got to see this. This, this is a highlight of every year for me, because the ingenuity of our citizens of how to get ten tires in a car.
Car.
Teeny-tiny VW Bug can somehow hold.
Tied to the top, yeah.
To the top, so you, you have to see it to believe it. You can get two dollars for each tire you turn in, up to ten tires. And I must regretfully inform everyone, you cannot be, bring those big semi-tires or farm equipment.
Tractor tires, yes.
I was out at the Soil and Water Conservation, and those, those tires are bigger than me, so those, those would be interesting to see someone bring in even one of those, but those are not accepted, so these are more normal tires. You must also show proof of Montgomery County residency, so we don't really want all of Ohio converging on us with all their tires, although we would love to get them out of nasty places. But this, I, I mean, this really is a great event that the community has supported for years, so please consider helping us keep these tires out of the landfill and make a little, you can make a little bit of money, up to twenty bucks.
Right.
In the process, and do a lot of good for your community, so check us out. Let's hope we have really good weather, and that's coming up this Sunday, the eighteenth.
Thank you. And, and I would say that it is such a cool thing to see Matt's team doing this work, and volunteers, we have so many volunteers, Kathy Peterson that used to work for us. Tawana.
All over the county, really.
It's great, and it's like, it's such a process, the cars come in there, and it's just, yeah, amazing what we do with those tires.
Well, it goes like clockwork, I mean, you know, from the minute you get there, boy, boom, 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 and then you're gone.
Yeah, we like coming on Sunday just to see the efficiency, so thank you, Matt. You do make it fun, you do. And again, I mean, it's, it's not a lot of money, but think about keeping those out of the landfill. That's why it's so important, just like when we do the tire foam events, too.
Well, and then just the health of those, if they're sitting out in the field.
Oh, yeah.
All the mosquitoes and all of that is really besides what it looks like, but health.
Yep, it's a great event, thanks, Matt. So, we haven't met since Child Support Awareness Month wrapped up, which, I didn't realize that, but I just wanted to share that, the great work that our child support team did. The driver's license reinstatement showed great activity. They returned to our pre-pandemic levels, so that's awesome. During August, we collected thirty-two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, which was a major jump from last year's total, where we collected twelve thousand, so, you know.
That's like three times a month.
Yeah, people have gone back to work, and, yeah. So in this program, people who had lost their licenses for non-payment of child support were able to get it back by paying one month of back support rather than the traditional three months, so that was a, a great benefit. I know we got the word out there, so hopefully people took advantage of it, because it's so important to reengage parents. And because of that, we were able to connect fifty-eight people also to job services, and these efforts benefited a hundred and nineteen of our children in Montgomery County, so I just want to give another shout-out, great job to our support team that made this happen. Thank you, and please let them know, Jerry, what we are.
Yeah, good. Okay, another thing that's coming up, mark your calendars, Sunday, October second, from three to seven, at our Employment Opportunities Center, which is located on West Third Street. We're going to be partnering with the Levitt Pavilion to host an open house event with a pop-up concert featuring the Dayton Funk All-Stars. There will be food trucks, raffle prizes, dancing, and more. Staff will be available at the event to talk about all the center has to offer. There is a community room there that citizens can reserve for meetings, we've been to many of them, staff to help with job searches, resume development, and more, and we even offer I.T., I.T. classes, thanks to our partnership with Sinclair Community College. The Employment Opportunities Center is in the West Town Shopping Center, located at forty-three oh-three West Third Street in Dayton, so please come check it out. That's October second, that's coming up right around the corner.
You know, that's a great thing that Levitt is doing, is these pop-up, you know, after the season's over, they're doing the pop-up concerts places, and it's really, really great.
All right, well, there will be no Montgomery County Commission meeting next Tuesday, September twentieth. Our next Montgomery County Commission meeting place will take, will take place on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, at one thirty PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a great two weeks.